Becky Bagwell from the management department. During the hurricane response and during that time and after she was awarded an EMD certification, which is a huge honor, and she was instrumental in the success of our hurricane response. So county administrator, you have anything you want to add to that?
Mr. Chairman, I just first of all, I want to echo exactly what you just said. It was, she was instrumental in our response to that. We definitely cannot have done it without her. I'm going to yield my time to our emergency manager. Make sure he gets his suns in today, sunny weather.
Good evening, council. Mr. Higgs, ladies and gentlemen. The South Carolina Certified Emergency Manager Program was created to raise and maintain professional standards in emergency management in the state of South Carolina. Deputy Director Bagwell has logged over 300 hours in addition to her additional duties as deputy director. I believe she is to be highly recommended for this achievement to the point where other team members of emergency management are also going to strive in the future to achieve this. Thank you very much. Next up, we have reports to council. I'll recognize Thomas Higgs, county minister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One little housekeeping thing before we get into some of the other things. Debris pickup status, it currently remains unchanged at the moment. However, we are talking to our counterparts at South Carolina Department of Transportation. They are in talks of shifting their operations. So as soon as we're made aware of what those shifts look like, we'll be posting that on the website. So anybody following that, please encourage your constituents as well as anybody in the audience, encourage your friends, neighbors, relatives. Follow up on that status on the website. We'll get it on there as soon as we can. One, one thing we do need to celebrate tonight, under the direction and leadership of our fire director Greg Lindley, the state's been in a, in a crisis bound with wildfires toward the Myrtle Beach area. Director Lindley sent three of our firefighters and a fire engine along with a tanker and two volunteers to assist in that. So if we could, if we could just give a round of applause for those who stepped up and helped. One thing to do, want to do is getting the budget calendar for council. We've been working diligently on the budget. We're, we're pretty much outpacing most of our counterparts across the state right now with the process. We already met interdepartmentally with well over half, if not a three quarters of our departments work on their individual budgets to formulate a budget to present to council for your deliberation. Right now, those department head meetings are scheduled to run until the 21st of March. The tentative date we have on the calendar for your deliberation and possibly first reading would be around April 14th. Is it my hopes to have a workable document to you well before that timeframe, but that's what's on the calendar right now. April 14th would be a possible first reading with May 14th being a workshop to tackle fire and EMS. 19th would be a proposed from administration budget workshop about the capital solid waste and general fund. May the 3rd would be another public notice with the second reading around May the 19th. And then we just go through our subsequent hearings thereafter. But just throwing those tentative dates out for your deliberation. Again, nothing has to be decided today, but that's just an administration suggestion for that calendar. And I'll send that out to y'all as well. Last but not least, we do have a visitor here today. She's a, she's a new face to her role, but not a new face of this community. Amanda Monian served, or later Amanda Beddington served as Lawrence County Chamber CEO and President. She is now on a new adventure and she has been replaced by, I mean, Dabs Davis is with us here tonight. So if you'd like to stand up to be recognized. We look forward to working with this as, as we do with the chamber hand in hand on all our, all our things. That's all I have tonight.
Are there any questions for our minister? We'll move on to public comment time. There are quite a few people who have comments. And so we'll start with Brenda Ligon. Are you speaking with the disabilities?
Yes.
We're not, we're not there yet. Thank you though. Yeah. I was a little confused. I apologize. This is our public comment time. Next item of public comment, Brenda Ligon.
I'm with the board with Peter.
Oh, okay. So you've signed. Gotcha. Makes perfect sense. Lonnie Wilson.
Chairman, members of the committee, council, I'm sorry. Good evening. My name's Lonnie Wilson. You've heard me here before. Most of you or I've met you offline. I'm the president of the board over at the Cross Hill Fire Department. As before we spoke, I just want to come in and give you a quick update, just a few things where we are and what we've been working on and the direction we're going. As you know, just a little over a year ago, we were at a becoming non-functional department and we restructured and started moving forward. From there, we've, we've got 28 firefighters on our roster as of now. Seven of them are fully trained. So we're fully trained with those. We have 19 others that are, have the emergency drivers training now. Medical responder training is completed. They have their hazmat training and several are in the firefighter one training at this point. So by June, you should have about 15 to 18 that are meeting all requirements to be able to do interior firefighting. They also do localized training. They're doing that right now. They do it every Monday night for about three hours a night. So they're, we're a very, very active fire department. Moving on down, we got our financial audits of last year. I know that was what we talked about last time. We were in the process getting that done. We're past our 23 and 24 financial audits. And we've moved forward with that. We've also filed our new filings to be active with the Secretary of State and everything down in Columbia. So we are on good standing back now. We're also working on a lot of other things. We've stepped up and tried to do a few things. We have some volunteers. One of them in particular, Hall West, has been working to help us put new procedures in place and look at what we need to be able to address. The proper policies and procedures to move forward as firefighters and as the management and as a board. We're putting those in place and we're printing those and we're making sure we're doing well. He's also been working with Greg and his group. They're actually putting new forms in place that we're sharing to that can be used across other districts in here that makes the job a little easier of administration of the fire department and of tracking, training and so on and so forth. So that's, that's, that's one thing we've been working with on that. Also, we've been working with the administrators here. They've, we've been trying to look at what, what we can do the opportunities from the hurricane. How can we do it better? Where, where is our opportunities for improvements? We've reached out to them. We've spent quite a bit of time discussing that. And we put on, you know, after action reviews, we went through ours and then we put together an after action review at a district level. And we submitted that up to the county to be able to work to see how we think we can do it better and how we can change our procedure and how we effectively respond to a lot of them. We look forward to improving this. You know, we want to, like I say, I'm big into policies and procedures, making sure people understand where they are. The other thing is even with some of the smaller emergencies that we've seen since then, not emergencies, but potentials and weather. We've got to the point where we know now how to stage equipment, personnel and everything to address that rather than being caught where we have to respond from a further distance or actually, you know, in some situations like we was in the hurricane, you're remote, no matter where you are, you're remote. So we, we've learned a lot of things to work on doing that. We're also reaching out to the community as a group around to our churches, our, our different communities throughout the area to learn what the medical needs are of some of the people. If you're on oxygen and you have to have that oxygen, you don't have power, your generator goes down, runs out of power, your O2 bottles are empty. We'd like to know that so we can address that before it becomes a problem. People that have to have certain appointments to get to life-saving appointments. We want to know, try to have that so we can plan accordingly ahead, you know.
Mr. Wilson, how much longer do you have?
I've probably got maybe two minutes, if you don't mind.
We are way over. We, we slot three minutes and we're almost at this.
Okay. Well, I apologize for that. I'll just say this, I'm happy to be able to give you guys the reports. If you'd like to have them in written form in the future or if you'd like to have me come in instead of final. But I think it's important just to have communications to you guys so you know where we're at and, you know, our plans that are moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Lawson.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for having me come up. I wanted to first introduce myself. My name is Alan Lawson. I'm the executive director of South Carolina empowerment. We co-founded that in M O Y seventeen years ago to combat generational poverty. I'm also a business owner in Lawrence County. I have a counseling practice. And through our nonprofit and the council, we serve a lot of individuals. And I want to speak on behalf of the thousands of individuals that we work with. Those individuals are doing the best they can in a hard time. And as we look, the county council, past county councils, they have a strong mindset for businesses. They promote businesses coming in, they support businesses coming in, and, you know, that's to improve Lawrence County. What I wanted to talk about is the program that we ran. We gave out over four million pounds of food in 2024. We gave out six, 61,260 cooked meals to residents of Lawrence County. And that is only two of the fifty programs that we run. We develop these programs to help people in the neighborhood that need assistance. Now, this, just the numbers themselves show a stark reality of what's going on in Lawrence County. Look at the number of businesses. We look at the number of growth. We think we're doing okay. There's a lot of people on the street. It's not good. Average person, average income that we serve is 650 up to 1,500 a month. That is not a lot of money in the local. And a lot of these are single, single parents and even working families that are having difficult times. Lawrence County businesses are thriving and the residents seem to be left behind. Lawrence County has a population of 68,873 residents according to data. And there's 974 businesses established in Lawrence County. The bottom profit of those businesses is 2.2 billion dollars. They're doing well. But for some reason, our citizens don't, they don't from that profit they receive. Now, looking at businesses inside in Lawrence County, there's only 7,542 people that live in Lawrence County that are working in those 900 and 74 businesses. Excuse me, disconnect there.
You said 900.
900 separate businesses. There's 7,542 people that live in Lawrence County that work in Lawrence County. And as the businesses grow, it seems like people in our communities are being left behind. They're coming in from all over the country, all over the world. They're coming in with jobs. But the people that built Lawrence County, that born and raised here are falling behind.
Lawson, can you finish up for her?
Yes. Well, my asking is for the council to partner with us and work with us to help address some of these things. And if that partnership would look like shifting focuses, not just the business road, but actually to the residents that elected you to office, what do they need in the county for your district? And work with us with financial assistance and collaboration where we can actually join to address some of that.
Nancy Garrison.
Good evening. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak and I'm sure you know what I'm going to speak about. Our work's ordinance and I appreciate what's going on to make, try to make this a correct vote on this. I have this, a few things I want to say before this goes again. I'd wanted to give you a few statistics real quick. Since 2010, fireworks have been responsible for hundreds of horse injuries and deaths in the United States. A survey found that 26% of horse owners reported injuries due to fireworks related anxiety. The most common injuries include cuts, sprains, broken limbs. Horses may exhibit anxiety such as running, sweating, trembling and damage of fences. More than 360 horses have been killed or injured in fireworks related incidents since 2010. Horses' instincts are to run to safety when frightened, which can lead to serious injuries. Almost 80% of horses are anxious, are very anxious during fireworks. Their flight reaction can be extremely dangerous for them. And then another statistic that was found done by Equine Charity, it said a frightening 49 horses have been killed, 317 injured, and 1,468 firework related incidents have been recorded with, with equine charity. And I wanted just to kind of clear up, you know, a few things about their and the reason that they, they do run and are scared that fireworks can cause stress and fear in horses and potentially result, result in severe accidents. Horses are flight animals and are generally tried to remove themselves from stress, stressful and scary situations such as fireworks displays. And, and one reason is, is because horses are prey animals. They are biologically programmed to react to the potential danger by fleeing. Even in domestic settings where horses are protected from predators, this is deeply ingrained in their instincts. I did want to clear up something that Mr. Filton had brought up last time about why the, an ambulance and stuff like that. It's a totally different noise. Horses learn through repetition of things and hearing things. It comes from far away. It doesn't affect them in the same way in any form or fashion. I feel like, you know, people have made the argument, my property, my rights is kind of a mute subject in my opinion because we feel the same exact way. And, you know, we have been very much agriculturally based county and we are hoping that they, that y'all will continue to look out for the agricultural community. And I did want to share something with y'all and I have each one of you to look at. Unfortunately, some of them are kind of graphic. The second one, I think I've got six of them there. The second one's really graphic. So if you're squeamish, you might want to whip it. But also I want to say is the first horse that was in there, got spooked by fireworks, actually ran into the road, was hit by a car and theirs are its injuries. The second one was also spooked, tried to jump its fence, took a toll back foot off and had to be euthanized. The third one lay and suffered, hung in a fence in the mud and everything else until the owners found it the next day. And then it, they, them two, two of them did survive with major injuries. And the last one is a picture of me and myself and one of my horses. And that's why I'm so passionate. They become our partners. They are, he owes me nothing and we owe them everything. And I have a barn full of them. I have a mare getting ready to foal in June and I want to protect all of them. I just wanted to thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mike Stagg Miller.
Good evening, council. Mike Stagg Miller, resident Gray Court. I'm here to, to my ongoing comments and issues within the volunteer fire system within Lawrence County. But before I start, I'd like to make a comment on Captain Williams Clark. Comments he made last, last meeting. Comment you made was about, thank you to the citizens for coming out and seeing how many are here. See what's going on in these meetings. It's great, great. And also that you would like to see more people come up here and speak. The only way we speak, you know what's going on in the county and within the county. So if we're not here telling you what's going on, sometimes you don't know what's going on. So thank you for that comment. And saying that, the pit worker I gave you is basically about transparency between the citizens and the council and knowing what we do and what we don't know. And it's good to have communications, communications are good between council itself and the citizens so we know what's going on. And that pit worker I, I have very well given was something I, I developed with county administrator last year. Just because there were so many issues going on within the volunteer system. It's degree going on, problems, people not being able to respond. There were many, many issues. So I thought to myself, hey, I can, I can help the county with my expertise. And I met with the administrator Higgs several times to discuss these issues, taking my own time. And after a few meetings, as you can see, I developed a program for the county. It was a volunteer program. I was going to take on or we could have somebody else within the county, within the fire service do that. We needed that because there's so much out in the county within the fire system that I'm sure you, the council people want to have no idea what they have. And or to Mr. Higgs, we don't know what they have. There's so much spent money, so much frivolous spend money on these equipment, training, apparatus and physicals and so forth within these departments. There's no way of tracking it. Nobody has that. No one's ever done it. So moving forward, as this community grows bigger and bigger, which it is, especially my community in the Green Pond area. And I know in the Fountain area, it's growing tremendous. And with that, your fire system needs to grow with it. And we don't have that or either. And some of the other systems. And I know Cross Hill came up chief there. Oh, they're doing a tremendous job, but the population there is awful small. And I'm glad they're, they're giving their community out and doing that, but we don't have that where I'm. When I tried and tried and tried, it came to this council to let you understand what's going on within our system. And pretty much nothing moving. I will be going forward later on and showing maybe the citizens more and more about how our tax dollars can be spent more wisely, how much money has been spent within these systems and we're getting nothing out of it, which is a huge problem. And as I said for last meeting, yes, OSHA is also looking at this standard as a fire brigade standard, what they call in Lincoln system, is they understand that there is also an issue within these counties, within the state, within the volunteer systems. So it's not just myself, it's bigger than that. And I'm just trying to get ahead of it and help out the county as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Albert Brown.
Yes, my name is Albert Brown. I will say good afternoon to everyone.
Good afternoon, sir.
I came up here to ask for funds for the Apple object rural community. I've been out there 30 years and we don't have, not first fire hydrant. Everybody here has been talking about fires down in Myrtle Beach area and everywhere else. And we have a brush fire out there, right, right behind me, rock hard. He got pine trees set out. That gas line coming straight through there as well. And over the 30 some years I've been out there, every house that called a fire out there has burned completely down. If the resident help council can give it to us, I would like to have it for the community. I don't have lots of room.
Thank you, sir. Ashley Rowe.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me outside the free. We're, we're, you know, we are talking about the fireworks or fireworks board and keeping that. I just wanted to really get a rate, a couple of things to you. We are experiencing tremendous growth in the northern area, just outside Fountain and Durbin Road especially. So with, with the rapid growth that's coming in, and there's really no end in sight. It's surrounded, it's completely surrounded. Nancy, there's another property that's being sold to a developer that's going to completely engulf her. It's going to be right across the street from us. It's changing. It's changed. And the county has an opportunity in future. So I'm talking about growth, but I'm getting through the fireworks thing. But the county's changing extremely rapidly to a point that we don't really have the roads. We don't really have the infrastructure. We don't really have the access to it. But for us that aren't going anywhere, we've got, we've got to live with the traffic, with the cars and all the consequences that come with that. They're, they're, they're going to be right up against Nancy. And, and they're going to, and they're going to be right up the brush offs of the road, right up against us. So we're, we're asking for a little help, just a little relief to give us a buffer with fireworks. That's a real thing. It's, it's a real thing. And, and God bless folks that want to do it, go do it. But we have, we have rights to. And it's not just when the prop, when the firework goes into your property. It's when they see it and it freaks them out. And we've had injuries. And Nancy has statistics and you've seen pictures. So just, please, please help us out. I know you've got a little housekeeping to do with the mix up on the boat, but I just hope and pray that you guys will reconsider. And I want to say something too about Mr. Brown. Like thank you for your work on the, as being chairman of that committee. He worked. We were willing to. He worked. We were willing to compromise. And, uh, and we didn't really feel it was reciprocal, uh, from the other side. But, but Mr. Brown, we came up with a compromise that we thought we could, uh, could live with. And, uh, so we just, we just asked for a little help, right? I mean, we're, we're there. We're, we've been there many, many years. We're not going anywhere. We appreciate reconsideration. Hopefully, uh, get this thing through on the third reading.
Alan Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of, uh, council. My name's Alan Patterson. I live on Henson Drive in Cross Hill. I'm, uh, I'm new to the area, uh, about a month here, um, but I wanted to check it out. But what probably comes, not fireworks, uh, but it does speak to, to growth in our county. Um, I moved here just about a month and a half ago from Lancaster County. Uh, Lancaster County, we saw tremendous growth in the Panhandle area where I grew up, my dad grew up, my grandfather grew up, my great-grandfather grew up. And, uh, we were pushed out, uh, by the growth in the county, by the growth of Charlotte coming south. Um, I say we were pushed out. It was by choice, but that was not the way we want to live anymore. Uh, but today I, I called the county office and asked a question about zoning within the county. And that's exactly what I got is silence. Um, so I noted it. I am, I, I, I am, I am a proponent of growth. I am a proponent of small government. I am a proponent, uh, of responsible growth. Um, but I, I think that, uh, as our county grows in the northern area, and it's going to come, it's just going to come throughout the county. Uh, Lawrence County is a great place to live. We've seen that already. Uh, but as, as you consider, from what I understand, uh, there's a, a task force or subcommittee talking about zoning in the county right now. Um, just as a, a council, um, I would just encourage you to take a, a real serious look at it. I am not in favor of limiting anybody's rights to their peaceful enjoyment of their property, um, at all. Uh, but, uh, my father-in-law says common sense is a whole lot less common now than it used to be. And so some people just are not made for it anymore. And so if we had to put some guardrails in place so that everyone can have peaceful enjoyment and everyone can see their property values maintained and appreciated as we live in Lawrence County. You'll hear the argument, oh, that'll, 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 that'll solve us not to be able to do what we want with our property. Well, what, what, what I've seen in my experience is it actually frees people to invest and to grow in areas that, that people can responsibly grow in instead of just being a, a haberdash of growth. So that's my two cents. Um, I, I'm willing to help where I can. Um, and I look forward to, uh, decades of growth and, uh, peaceful enjoyment of property in Lawrence County. Thank y'all for your time.
Richard Young.
Oh, my. Good afternoon.
In my concern, the same thing Mr. Brown has. I still not watching. We have a fire hydrant that my call my insurance company, they actually, I pulled it in from your near fire hydrant. Eighty, ten mile, you know? So if you're going to get in this town like that, and we got a couple of roads out there, ain't nothing to pay. So, you know, we'll get some help. From the town of that, we should appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Shawna Shirley.
Evening. Thank you again. I am here pleased in support of Nancy and Harlock Fables again against the fireworks ordinance. Now, I talked last time you were here about, um, the fear that my animals went through with fireworks and the panic they went through. I got swallowed up by houses. I went from one little light outside my kitchen window to a hundred. I have watched for a couple of years these people come before you guys desperately fighting to protect their land. And you know, you just can't fight progress. You just can't. They're being swallowed up. We talk about compromise and we all want to compromise, but you know, um, growth and developers, they went out every time. Yes, they got a little higher burns. Yes, they got a little bit bigger lots, but they're being swallowed up and we can't stop it. But in the spirit of compromise, you can, if you will, help protect their property and protect their animals. I mean, it's fireworks. We can live without fireworks. You can go anywhere and see fireworks. I'm asking you, please. You stole my common sense line. I was going to use that one. Please, it is common sense to protect. These people have been there three generations. They have to have some protection. You have to protect them. I'm begging you to please consider not letting their property and their animals be damaged in any way. And get this man fire hired. That broke my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise LeBeck.
Thank you, um, Councilman, uh, Andy. Um, I'm also here to speak about the fireworks ordinance. And, um, Nancy and Ashley and Shawna, uh, have a farm in the northern part of the county. Um, have horses, hayfields. And it is, it's terrifying for some of our animals. Um, and it's not only scary for them, but it's dangerous. And, um, it's, it's also nuisance to the, to the homeowner and the farm, the farmer. Um, fireworks are made with potassium nitrate, sulfur, offensive charcoal, salts, wood, plastic, paper. And not only, it, it, it's litter, basically. And if you could shoot up off your fireworks and shoot them off and keep them on your property, um, you know, that would be fine, but you can't. Um, and if you have neighborhoods that are completely surrounding our farms, and which most of us do, um, we're the ones that have it in our horse pastures, where our horses are eating and our hayfields. Um, and it's just, it's littered and we would appreciate help from, um, the council. Uh, just to help us protect our animals and protect our farmland. And thank you, Colonel.
That concludes our public comment period. Our next item on our agenda is reports from committee. We did have one committee meeting since our last meeting here, and that was our committee as a whole. We met on February twenty-fourth to promulgate the rules that are, you know, on the agenda for a resolution at first reading tonight. And our committee as a whole, um, does recommend adoption of the rules that we came up with on February twenty-fourth. So when we get there, the committee as a whole, uh, has recommended that. There are no other reports from committee. We'll move into old business. Council submissions of, uh, appointments to boards and commissions. Our first item, our healthcare board recommendations. First, my health CEO, Justin Benfield submitted, uh, healthcare board recommendations to us. And I would move that we accept that slate as presented by Justin Benfield. The motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. We also have an, uh, an appointment from District Six for our airport commission, and that is Lynn Edge. What is your pleasure in approving Lynn Edge?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. And our third item is District Three Library Board. Remember, that would be Jennifer Brax. What is your pleasure on Jennifer Brax?
Motion.
We have a motion and a, motion on Mr. Philson, second by Ms. Clark. All those in favor? Six, zero. Are there any other tonight for approval?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have an appointment for Parks and Recreation Board, uh, Mr. Steve Cole. He's a resident of the Green Pond community, a member of Justin Ridge Baptist Church and a dedicated community man. Uh, I think he'd be a great addition to Mr. Howard's team. I'm pleased to nominate him for Parks and Recreation.
We have a recommendation, Councilman Brownlee, for Steve Cole. First motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Are there any other permissions? Hearing none, move on to item B, our old business. Recognize Councilman Brownlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the reasons set forth in the notice of the motion to rescind, uh, I move that we rescind the vote on third reading, uh, ordinance nine seventy-six, the fireworks ordinance, and further move that council conduct a new vote on third read.
Motion by Mr. Brownlee, second of the record, Councilman Patterson. Any discussion? I will say this, this vote that we take will nullify the vote that happened at our last council meeting that was in question related to our fireworks ordinance. It will revert us back to third reading of that ordinance in which we will vote tonight.
Okay, uh, it's, um, how did that, that last reading, how did it end? Did the fireworks people make any concessions at all? I think the last time it was, we were asking three hundred foot from a fence line.
So the, the document that we voted on did have some substantive changes to it. It was agreed upon through the committee meeting that they had on the fireworks. And it did have some concessions that were made on, mostly on the homeowner's side. There were really no concessions for the fireworks, the people who were selling fireworks, is that you're speaking to?
Well, I'm just, um, it's same block. The people with the horses and the arms and whatnot. They're the only ones who give, like, you know, like me.
Right. The, the document that we had was something that everybody agreed that that would be a compromise they, they could work with.
The number three hundred foot speaks my hate of the fence line.
Okay. Well, this, this vote is simply to rescind the last vote. We will then have third reading and we can have discussion at that.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to rescind? Six, zero. Next item, the old business is the third reading of ordinance nine seventy-six, the fireworks ordinance. I have a motion to approve on third reading. I'll make that motion to approve. Second. I'll open the floor for discussion.
So what we're doing here is we're, we're giving people that's got farms, we're giving them another chance to protect their property.
Yes, sir.
That's what I think. The first position, the third reading, ours, nine seventy-six. I would like to give them a chance to go do again, protect your farm.
Any other comments? I will say, uh, that what we heard from our constituents this evening echoes my thoughts, is there are opportunities that we have at times to provide some protections to people who are being negatively impacted by, uh, actions of, uh, neighboring landowners. I don't think this is an overreach. I don't think this prevents anybody from doing anything. It does give protections in a very narrow scope that only affects people that are impacting agricultural farmland that is housing, uh, livestock, that properties have been put in a firework zone. It's, it's not a blanket, no fireworks in our county. It's tailored to allow some protection specifically to those who have been negatively impacted. And that's my thoughts on it.
Or any restrictions on that far, you have to be from a fence line, or?
So in, in the language, what we're voting on, the, uh, people who put their, uh, land in a firework zone can petition to get an additional three hundred foot buffer if they have active livestock being, um, housed on their property.
Okay. So the, the farmers and the horse people, they can get, they can jump the hoops and loops and get their property, I guess, that side of the right would, firework zone three, or up to three hundred foot.
So if they go through the, the state's requirements, the state law, and get their property put in a fireworks zone, they can put, if they have actively pastured livestock as defined in the document, they can petition the council to get an additional three hundred foot buffer.
Mr. Chairman, yes, an additional thousand. Three, at three hundred feet.
Well, they can petition to get three hundred if they had shown disparate impact to their animals. That three hundred foot is not enough. There is an option for them to come and request a thousand.
Chairman, point of clarification. At the last third reading, there, um, was an amendment to remove subsection B, which said within a thousand feet from the perimeter of residential housing development. I just want to bring the council's attention. That's still in there right now.
It, it did specifically say from a residential housing development, yes, and that was removed.
Was it removed or was it not removed?
It was removed last time, but it hasn't been removed this time. So it's currently in the ordinance that y'all are getting ready to vote on.
There have been no amendments. Any amendments that we took at our last meeting were nullified with our rescind the vote motion. So yes, what I said is that.
Just to clear, this is approved tonight as three hundred feet from anyone who puts their property in a firework zone and a thousand feet from any residential development, housing development. Is that established based on the kind of GIS or what constitutes a residential housing development? I did not see it in the definitions.
I can't speak to that. I'm assuming that question is for me. So you can put, I'll walk you through your speech.
I'm, I'm concerned about B. I'm good on A.
Okay, you're good on A?
Yeah.
And you're good on the subsection of A where you can expand to a thousand feet if animals injured? And then section B is from a residential housing development with no definition in the ordinance, so it's giving subdivision in Lawrence County.
Okay, so even one that's got two and a half acre lots and, I mean?
The way the ordinance is currently drafted, yes.
In an effort to have some resemblance of common sense, I'll make a motion to remove section B that specifically talks about subdivisions from the ordinance, same as we did last time. I'll make that a motion. Okay. Motion is second. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of removing subset B specific to the subdivision? Five. Move again, that's five to one, Councilman Patterson in opposition. Now we're back to, we accept that as amended motion, so now we'll take a motion to approve the amended ordinance, removing section B. Are still approved?
And maybe we can just do that amended ordinance. Point of clarification, I believe this is a vote on the third reading of ordinance nine seventy-six as amended.
As amended.
The last, uh, final vote.
Final vote, last part of the address.
For what?
I, I have a motion and they're second. Like, all right, now we can discuss.
I get the. But I'm sure we're voting to protect the people's lives, so.
Hold on one sec, I'll clarify my motion. Most to approve on third reading, ordinance nine seventy-six with the amendment.
To strike.
To strike subsection B.
Voting to protect people's livestock.
Yes, sir. That's the intent. For me. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving on third reading, ordinance nine seventy-six, the fireworks ordinance, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Vote is three to three. It fails, uh, with a tie. Next item up for business, on new business, is approval of resolution twenty twenty-five six, fair housing resolution. We have a motion to approve, resolutions twenty twenty-five. Got a motion to approve resolutions twenty twenty five six, fair housing resolution.
Motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. Next item up is first reading of ordinance nine eighty one, project Wolf below. I'll call Jonathan Coleman to LCT.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. This is a field we have a new industry looking to locate in Woodfield and industrial park, which is right on the county line already. About, we found in committing with best nine and a half million dollars, minimum at least nine and a half million dollars and create twenty-two new jobs. And this will be a new facility to buy property and we'll be building.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Coleman?
I didn't need to see him after the meeting.
We have a motion to approve on first reading.
I was gonna ask him, um, you might not know on this particular project, but what's our average wage for our industry in the county?
Twenty-one. Twenty-one ninety.
Oh, oh. Good person, sir.
Twenty-one ninety?
Yeah.
An hour?
Yeah.
Thank you.
How many people they say they have?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. And everybody don't know, he's talking about the project. Y'all don't understand what the land is. It's up there behind Yang Rain. He built a new, oh, new building behind Yang Rain. That's all right?
That's where they're looking at.
Where they're located, yeah.
We have a motion to approve first reading, ordinance nine eighty one, project Wolf. Motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second. What was I saying? All those in favor? Six zero. Mr. Coleman, if you would, uh, bring me a little brace. I skipped item A. Oh, I have two agenda items. Could you, um, give me just a moment? Let me, I apologize. Item A was approval of resolution, resolution twenty twenty five seven. Disabilities Awareness Month. I need to, uh, have a second one. Mr. Littlefield, would you like to come forward?
Good evening. Council members, administrator, my name is Peter Littlefield. I'm on the board of Lawrence County Disabilities and Special Needs Board. Jason Norman takes this place, is not available here with me, is Brenda Legan. On behalf of five hundred people with intellectual disabilities, autism, head injury, spinal cord injuries, we support their families, caregivers, and over two hundred staff. I'm here to share with March is Disabilities Awareness Month. During this month, we celebrate many contributions that people with lifelong developmental disabilities make in our community. We recognize the vital role of all caregivers, paid and unpaid. We promote, we promote mindful and deliberate inclusion of all citizens. We acknowledge the various individuals and community partners that have offered meaningless, offered meaningful opportunities for employment, volunteering, socialization, worship, and sportsmanship. Thank you, county, for our board member nominations. Thank you for funding the support for employment, transportation. It's vital to allowing the people we support obtain and keep a job. We thank you for the support of our events. You are all invited to our early morning breakfast in the Palmetto Room on, on March twenty fifth.
And I, I do apologize, uh, slaying about the mix up on the scene. So if you would indulge me, I would like to read the, the proclamation on the resolution.
I wasn't aware it was around. Yeah, thank you.
On behalf of the county of Lawrence, South Carolina, it's with deep pride that we, the Lawrence County Council, do proclaim with extreme honor Disabilities Awareness Month, whereas Lawrence County recognizes the unlimited potential for all citizens, including those with developmental disabilities to live, work, and thrive. And whereas Lawrence County is committed to recognizing that every person, regardless of perceived ability, has valuable strengths, infinite capacity to learn and make decisions, and the capability to make valuable contributions to their communities that given the opportunity to do so. And whereas Lawrence County is making positive changes by promoting equality of opportunity, access, and choice for individuals with developmental disabilities, be it resolved and proclaimed on this tenth day of March twenty twenty five. We will get these signatures affixed for you and present this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Business to that, can I get an approval of resolution twenty twenty five seven, disability awareness?
Motion.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Mr. Coleman, I apologize. You can come back. The next item is first reading of ordinance nine eighty two to amend its octagon multi-county industrial park that includes project.
Yes, sir. Uh, one point of clarification from Mr. Patterson is twenty-one ninety-three. Ninety-three, twenty-one ninety-something, but I couldn't remember what that last one was. And so this, this is just amending the multi-county industrial park agreement to add this project into it. Um, it's just a, a formality that goes with each field agreement that, uh, it's not technically a physical industrial park. It's just on paper.
Are there any questions for Mr. Coleman further about amending the multi-county industrial park to include project? Not motion approved.
Motion approved, ordinance nine eighty two on first reading.
Second. Motion and second. Any more comment? If not, all those in favor? Six zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is the first reading of ordinance nine eighty to amend the ordinance eight eighty-eight to establish an agricultural advisory board. Before we take a motion to approve ordinance nine eighty, I would like to make a motion to amend it. I would like to make a motion.
An order, chairman. You can't make a motion to amend a motion that's not existent yet.
Well, thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion for first reading of ordinance nine eighty, amended ordinance eight eighty-eight to establish agricultural advisory board.
Second.
Motion and second. I would like now to make a motion to amend ordinance nine eighty to add a section eight that provides that section two subset B, VII of ordinance eight eighty-eight is repealed. That language in that state said existing appointees may be reappointed on January first of the year following expiration of their term, provided no appointee may serve more than two consecutive terms. There are lots of opportunities to serve, but we have a lot of trouble getting people who really want to serve on committees. And when we limit that to two terms, we may have some really good people on those committees who want to continue and want, and we want them to continue, but we're unable to. So my motion would be to repeal the portion of eight eighty-eight that prevents, that, uh, says only two consecutive terms. I'd like to really. That is my motion.
So you saying they can't serve what, two time?
That is currently the language says they can only serve two. I want to remove that language.
I got you.
Got a motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Five to one, Councilman Patterson in opposition. Now I will entertain a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance nine eighty with the amendment. So okay, a motion and second. Any discussion?
What happened to the original motion?
The motion to amend passed time one. Now we're on the motion for our first reading of ordinance nine eighty as amended.
By the original motion for ordinance nine eighty.
The first motion regarding the first reading on nine eighty.
We didn't need the second call to a motion, attorney, I don't believe. We had a motion on the table. We had an amended motion. Now we should be back to the original motion on the ordinance nine eighty.
On first reading, ordinance nine eighty as amended.
Which took a motion in the second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments?
Yes, uh, I was under the impression, we discussed this, that part of these duties were going to be to govern or see governance over the agricultural facility, uh, out on exchange drives similar to the setup of the airport commission does for the airport. Is that still not the case? I did not find any of that language in the ordinance.
That language is not in the ordinance because it's the first I've heard of it. But I'll be happy to amend the ordinance to include that language.
I make a motion to amend ordinance nine eighty to include language that governs over the agricultural center currently being built.
Second. Any other discussion?
So nine eighty going into the agriculture center for.
Yes, sir. Nine eighty allows us to add the agricultural advisory board to the existing ordinance eight eighty-eight. Yes, sir.
I see a benefit of adding language for this commission to govern that agricultural facility, but also see a need for this commission to not only focus on that, but focus on the agricultural needs of the community. Lawrence gets an agricultural founded on agriculture. There's a lot of farmers throughout this county and there's a lot of associations that we can pull these members from. Uh, so I believe that having some language so that they can advise on behalf of the agricultural center, but also on behalf of the farmers in Lawrence County. Yeah, are, are you requesting more language? I think what the attorney did so far was great, actually better than expected. And, and talks about that. I'd just like to have the agricultural governance on top of that. Yes, my opinion is that should be included.
And chairman?
Yes, sir.
Now, my knowledge was that when we started this vote, the agriculture center, the people that, that vote when we started, we want someone to be in through livestock or anything like that.
So, so this board would be a, each councilperson would point somebody to it.
Everybody pick one.
I would assume that the background in ag would be a benefit, but I don't think that would be something that would deter you from being able to point somebody that maybe understand business or needs like that. Any other comments? Let me clarify.
Is your motion agreeable on with what Bradley said or do you feel me?
Not just in addition to what he. But we're not, we're not limiting this board to only.
Other discussion, all those in favor? Six zero. That was. Fine. Um. Next item is approved.
Now we, now we need a vote on the original motions.
Oh, because we did amend it again?
Yes, sir.
Yes, not even now.
Motion to approve ordinance nine eighty.
Motion to approve ordinance nine eighty.
All those in favor? Six zero. Next item, approval of resolution twenty twenty five five, temporarily adopt rules and regulations of Lawrence County Council. This is what I referenced earlier that we met in.
The resolution twenty twenty five.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. Final item, the first reading of ordinance nine seven nine to adopt rules and procedures of Lawrence County Council. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance nine seven nine of the council.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I will just mention that this is an ordinance to codify what we just approved in a resolution to make it an ordinance at county ball how we, uh, govern ourselves our. All those in favor of approving first reading, ordinance nine seventy-nine? Approval of nine seventy-nine? Six zero. We'll now move into county council comments. Start with Mr. Phillips.
We need to have one. Thank from, from people from the apple archery, my district six representatives coming out, Mr. Lawson, Yoko's son and everything. And, uh, and I know that district six, we do need fire hydrants and we thank the people, keep coming, y'all. Thank Mr. Most. You know, you didn't get to sign up and look the, uh, open and stuff. But tell the people in district six, got to come, tell y'all our opinions so we can pass it on. See the gentlemen and ladies up here on the boat and stuff. So we know that like you said, that what all the wildfire, we got the gas line out there and everything and anything can happen. We never, we didn't know if everything was going to hit up this way. They got Liam, like the county administrator said, go ahead and still put the limbs and stuff out. And so the DOT department can still, we move the limbs and everything, pass it on to everybody, the whole county. They still here. We want to say thank God for everything y'all do for our county and like Ms. Quad said earlier, you don't come and tell us, we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Youngs. Ms. Claude.
Want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and, um, also, um, as we celebrate Disability Month, I do applaud y'all for giving that proclamation, ready for special needed disability. Also, it was, um, National, um, Women's Month on Saturday. So I applaud all the women that we got to keep fighting. As you all can see, I'm up here by myself with these guys. So I need the females to come and support me. Let me look in your face as well. And I thank all of you for what you're doing. Um, oh, that's the name. I forgot the word. Oh, my God. Miss Becky, congratulations for all you guys that helped us, um, when Helena came through, we're learning. We thank you as well, Mr. Sonny, all of you, um, that came out. Um, I want to thank you, Mr. Howard. Our airport is beautiful. If y'all had not visited our new airport terminal, please go by there. It is beautiful. Um, we did a ribbon cutting. I love it. It is so beautiful. We did amazing jobs. So do go take time to visit our airport terminal out there as well. And I just said, thank all of us for coming out and coming to share your concerns and issues that going on in your, um, community. Don't stop coming. Don't let this be the last time. We got to keep going. We got to keep fighting. We got to keep pushing. One day it will pay off at the end. Thank you. Have a blessed night.
Councilman Maxwell.
I'll start by actually with a sample of your statements first, Mr. Becky Bagel. Uh, you're a award well deserving. Thank you so much for all you did there. Holding those for some long hours we all spent together and, uh, you executed flawlessly with a great team and led everyone through that troubling time and congratulations. Um, Mr. Wilson, thank you for coming for Cross Hill. Uh, I know you mentioned that, uh, Cross Hill is, um, in a bad place, uh, not that they wanted to be, but found themselves there with their fire uh, response times and, and volunteerism. And I appreciate you coming in and taking the reins and, and leading them back to, to a good place. And it's a strong district when we all look to now as, as a single story. And I hope that we can emulate that across county and, and other areas. And I do appreciate all you do. Mr. Lawson, thank you for speaking on empowerment center. I did tremendous work up there in Gray Court. Um, if you haven't already, I would encourage you to work with Mr. Coleman and, and his staff. They have job fairs all the time. They have a list of contacts at all the businesses uh, there in Gray Court and across the county. Twenty-one ninety-three an hour is pretty strong, in my opinion. Now, I realize not all the jobs pay that, but all of them are more than double minimum wage, um, that are out there to be had. And I, I think you'd be a good avenue. Maybe we could work with you on a job fair or something to that effect, uh, here in the near future and, and find some places for your folks that, that want to work. Um, because I know that a lot of folks you serve want to work. Uh, they just are struggling to find, find the ability to get there. And I, I appreciate all you do to, to help push them. And, uh, also I would ask, uh, the administrator, if you will work with Lawrence County Water Sewer, I appreciate the gentleman coming and speaking on the fire hydrants. Um, you can, uh, maybe even give us a map of what is and isn't there. It sounds like there's not much there at all. Um, and maybe we'll see what the avenue to, to do that would be. Uh, it would be a, it would be a task, just to be honest with this task, I think, be addressed and looked at. So if you could get with Mr. Phil from Water Sewer, that would be awesome. Um.
If you get with Mr. Phil from Water Sewer, that would be awesome. Um, Mr. Littlefield, thank you. I think we recognize the disability. Employment month, last month of the month before, we are privileged to have multiple folks from your organization out of evergreen skills working here at the county there. Uh, everybody else that works for us, plug your ears. They're some of the best employees we have. They're always happy to be at work. They never complain. They do a phenomenal job and work well with the staff and. And we're blessed to be able to, to work with you guys and make that happen. So.
Besides that, everybody have a happy March. Well, basketball getting ready to go on. We'll let the March man stay on the basketball court. Thank you. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep these comments brief as everyone's covering most everything, but I love to see a tiny reading. That's been a common denominator since I've been on council since January. We just appreciate all y'all filling in these seats. Makes us happy for y'all to be here. Kind of exciting time and a challenging time coming up with budget the next couple of months. So I know we'll be working diligently on that. Hopefully deliver what Lawrence County taxpayers and workers need. Excited to get the ag board established, not only to oversee our agriculture center, but also to get opinions from everybody in the ag community, just because we're such a big county. And so many different diverse areas, I feel like it'll be great to have all those folks spread around the county, you know, bringing that voice of agriculture back in county council. I want to thank Mr. Littlefield, Ms. Ligon from the Disability Special Needs Board. I really appreciate y'all coming tonight. And talk about the powers, ordinance again, I discussed this at the last meeting. I am a huge believer in limited government. And also have owned livestock throughout my life. I grew up on a farm and heavily want to protect agriculture. I just don't believe that this is the right mechanism to solve the issue. But again, just want to appreciate all y'all for coming out tonight. Well, I have Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Phil, did you have something?
What else I need to, I don't know, to ask the council or ask the people in our, so Walmart distribution center reached out to me. They got like thirty eight trucks up there loaded with clothes and shoes. And we can get out to Mr. Lawson or whatever. They got half the place with the loading dock and with the ramp with a lift on it. And if you invite and contact me, we get in contact with them. And so we, anybody y'all know got a warehouse? That we can unload the county all of together. Uh, they willing to give out all of this stuff. They don't give out to Lawrence County because nobody got a warehouse. That why they take it to North Carolina. They take it to another place because nobody around here have a warehouse to unload. And so that's good for the whole community, for everybody. If not, we, we sell it. We give it out to the people that we meet.
That's right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. I appreciate everyone that came out tonight. I will try to do it correctly. I don't get my feelings hurt if we have to do something different or correct what happened. The intent is to be a good steward of our, our citizens and the trust that we have in these positions that we, we just, we, what we put out there, you can be proud of. I am disappointed that we couldn't accomplish something as related to the fireworks because I thought it was narrowly tailored and addressed a specific concern. Vote was the vote, but we, it was correct. So. We want that. Do thank you for all the comments that were there during public comment because like everyone else said, it is important that we know what's going on. Times we are not involved in all the situations you are and you are the subject matter experts. We appreciate that. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Certainly. All those in favor? In the journal. Thank you.